Of Lot 6, partial of Lot 6, proposed rezone from R2 to C2. Please state your name and address, please, Doug.
Good evening. Doug Reddick, DVG, representing Dale Lenting. Dale is a property owner. He's also here tonight if you have any questions specifically for him. A lot of you'll remember this project. Dale has been considering trying to rezone this property for some time. That previous petition has been withdrawn. We're starting over. And the idea is to rezone a portion of his property. He's zoned R2 right now. It's the property just east of 41 on the north side of 231. That's obviously the pond on the property there. And he lives at the north end of the property in that house. The desire is to take the southwest portion of the property and rezone it to C2 commercial for basically a small pole barn for Dale's business. You can see the pole barn there with like a warehouse area and a little showroom area at the south side, small parking lot south of that, and then a small loading area on the north side of the building. And then ultimately, the northwest corner of the site, hopefully to do another residential lot. So it's going to require a subdivision. But first and foremost, we've got to talk about the rezone of a portion of the property, in this case, just being the southwest portion of the property to rezone from R2 to C2. That's what it's all about.
Was there, Sergio, was there public notice sent out on this?
No, this is just a study session at this point, correct. There is no file number assigned because no receipt of payment has been received. It's just a study session for review.
So with this subdivision, would the road have to be redone since it's zoning it to commercial?
Yes. Under the current subdivision, subdivision control ordinance, they have to comply. They must comply with all requirements, including road improvements, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, unless waivers are granted by the plan commission.
And that would be to the commercial zoning requirements?
To all affected parcels, proposed parcels for subdivision, yes.
Okay. Does the petitioner know that?
We are aware. If you look at the very south end, there's a little triangle on the east side of the road, and another one on the west side of the road that are owned by the town of St. John. And when they did that work, probably when the corner was developed, they widened the right-of-way a little bit. You can see it in the drawing there. It goes from a 40-foot right-of-way. They added 10 feet on each side. And that's, so we would dedicate our 10 feet on our side of the road for the additional right-of-way. Of course, we can't dedicate the west side of the road. And then if improvements are necessary for the road, including curbs and sidewalks, Dale, you understand what they're saying there. So I guess the question then is, will we take that just to the north end of the commercial, or we go all the way to the end of the road? We could talk about that later. But yeah, we understand that there'll be some improvements necessary there.
And what part, Doug, can you say what part that you want to make it commercial again?
Can you go back to the other exhibit, please? That dark line near the north end of the pond, right there. That's the parcel that we want to rezone. Everything else will stay residential.
And what's the strip of land going to the north for? Easement, or?
No. Well, the strip is two options as to where the lot line might be to make it meet the R2 requirements. I think we've got to go to the easterly side of that. But anyway, that's a future R2 lot that will be included in the subdivision.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question in regards to that lot line that it might be. Could you explain that to me a little bit better?
Which line?
The lot line that you said, right there between the...
There and there?
Yes, yes, sir, that one.
So Dale had a sketch done before I got involved, and they were creating a lot there at the corner. And they used the westerly of those two lines. But on closer examination, I knew to make a R2 lot and a corner lot, the corner lot's got to be 20% wider. And they didn't account for that. So it's just a matter of pushing that line over to make that corner lot 120 feet wide to meet your R2 ordinance for a corner lot. So the west line, you could pretty much ignore.
So Joe, most likely it'd go to the far east line, not to the west line.
Okay, this one right here, the first, that, the one, okay.
Nothing's fine. Also depending, if we dedicate the additional 10-foot right-of-way and then go 120 feet, that's what that line represents. And it still clears the house by about 10 feet, as I recall.
So that used to be an R1, but they dropped it to R2, is that correct?
I think it's always been R2.
You don't know?
The whole property is R2.
It's R2.
I would like to ask why the entrance to where the pole barn showroom is, why couldn't that come off of 41 instead of the residential?
231.
Or 231, yes, instead of the residential. Because after the push from the residents that live back there, I think it would be a good idea to just keep all trucks out of that area.
And I'm not saying, we could do that. Likewise, do we call 231 the frontage of that lot? And then we would have a setback off of there, which is fine. We can accommodate that. But sometimes we get entrances real close to public roads. The separation there, sometimes it's better not to do it that way. So more discussion necessary, but we could certainly accommodate that if the town wants that.
Doug, would NDOT have to review any connection there to 231?
For sure. We would need a highway permit from NDOT if we're going to connect to 231.
Yeah, because it's a, yeah.
Yeah. So that's an extra step. But in the, yeah, I'm not sure how they would look at it. I have a traffic engineer in our office that does a ton of work within that, and I'll run it by her, too.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea, because there's a lot of residents, you know, months ago that they didn't want traffic. And, you know, and I understand where they're coming from, you know, on their residential street.
But at the same point, if we're going to make it a commercial-grade street and bring it up to current standards, why can't we have the truck traffic, you know?
Well, well, to your driveway, not to the whole roadway.
Right.
Yeah, but when they bought that land, Doug, and moved into their house, it wasn't commercial, so.
I understand that, yeah.
They're, you know, not to sound like a crybaby, but they're there first, so.
Right. And if we're going to go commercial, there comes, there's expenses involved with that. I understand that. We understand that. But we, yeah, I don't have a problem putting the driveway over there if that's what it takes and getting the highway permit.
So what's the intended use for this property?
Dale can speak for himself, but by understanding he has a tile business, and he does tile. So he wants a warehouse for storage and a showroom to have some display area for people to pick tile. So it's not a retail store. Is it open, would it be open regular hours or by appointment? How would you do?
Probably regular hours.
Regular hours, so. But specifically for buying and installing tile.
Is there enough room to run, if you were to go to the east of that warehouse and run along the pond area, would there be enough room to put a little access road to the back of his warehouse in that area? I was just curious.
Same thought. If we bring the entrance in from 231, get to that back, yeah, I think we could accommodate that. There's quite a bit of slope. You can kind of realize everything drains to that pond. But if we got to get a driveway in there, I think we can make it work.
I just think all the pushback that he did receive from the residents and...
Minimize that. I was at some of those meetings. I remember seeing some of that remonstrance. And I think that's a good point, too, if that's something that'll help.
Yeah, and there might even have to be some kind of physical barrier on the east side of that road, fence, or...
No access, something.
You know, something, so they're just shielded, landscaping something.
Yeah, maybe a landscape firm along there, sure.
You know, Arbor Vitae's or something. I don't know what it'd be, but...
This is a quick sketch with the two driveways, just to get access to the building. But if it needs to go the other way, I think we can make it work. I know we can make it work.
Yeah, I just, right now, I don't, I don't want to have these residents think that we're just trying to squeeze them out.
I understand that. And I think last time...
And I understand you want to, you want to continue your business. You have a business now and...
And I think last time, they were doing it without the benefit of a concept plan. And it's kind of scary. How big of a building? How much asphalt are we talking about? How many cars? It's not a huge building by any means, you know. It's, well, much like you see here, so.
What are the dimensions of the barn, the pole barn?
The barn itself is 80 by 100, and the showroom is 32 by 72. So like 2,000 square foot showroom, that's for the public. That's not a big space at all. Probably have more parking than is even necessary.
Say the dimensions again, Doug, sir.
The barn itself, the warehouse space is 80 by 100, as drawn here. And then the showroom is 32 by 72.
Keep in mind, too, Doug, that you're in the 231 overlay, just when it comes to design standards for the building.
Yep, more of that. And that goes back how many feet? Do we call the overlay district five or?
I believe it's 600 feet.
600.
600?
But I believe the ordinance reads if the lot, if a portion of the lot is in that 600 feet, the entire lot is considered a part of the overlay.
I don't have any questions. You guys have questions? Sergio, you good?
Yep. So then our intention is to file an application and do the necessary advertising and everything for a public hearing. You'll be seeing more of us very soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on the list, Providence Bank subdivision, Lot 2, proposed re-subdivision of Providence Bank subdivision, Lot 2, for a five commercial and two residential lot subdivision at Calumet Avenue. Approximately, this is 211 feet south of 101st and Calumet Avenue.
Once again, Doug Reddick with DVG. The owners of the property, Mr. Scheider and Mr., how did you say your last name? Napoli? Are here. Again, they're the owners and the proposed developers of the property. I think you all know the property on the west side of Calumet Avenue here. Current project that's under construction on the east side is St. John Commons. So what we're doing is we're lining up the entrance road. Yeah, so that's the property that they own. It's all been, it was annexed into the town of St. John some time ago. The project under construction is where the cursor is. That's St. John Commons. And in fact, we staked the first house back in the back there in St. John Commons today. So I think you're going to see a rooftop going in there pretty quick. But this is a concept plan. There's five commercial lots. The property's already zoned, C2. The agenda mentions the two residential lots at the south end. We're probably going to take those out for the short term. That's what we did across the street. We put a little cul-de-sac in there, put two cottage homes just to kind of finish off the street. We have no intentions of extending the street to the north. But we know that's going to take some variances and what have you. And I think we're going to probably just plat that whole south end where the transmission towers are and the pipeline, probably plat that as an outlot for the short term, and then come back later and talk about the residential. I just don't think it's something that they want to pursue as imminently as the rest of the project. So we met with staff, had some feedback there. The plan was originally just a cul-de-sac. We pushed that back a little further west and extended the right-of-way all the way to the property line, so the road could be extended if desired. That's a different owner over there on the other side of the property. These gentlemen are talking to that owner. It's possible that they can acquire some or all of that land. They also own the building to the north. There's two buildings at the very north side up there on 101st. They own the one to the east. We could talk more about other issues going on there. They're on septic and well. They want sewer and water, but that's all part of another project. And one building's in the county, one building's in the town of St. John, and Aqua serves Emerald Crossing, and St. John serves the other one. So, but we're not talking about that tonight. We just want to show that we have connectivity to that other parcel, because there is some developable land. There's a septic system that's right near that, where that street would come through, which would, you know, have to be removed when they get the sewer and water. But basically, we want to take a piece of property that's owned commercial and develop it with five commercial lots. We'll be extending sanitary sewer and water main as needed throughout the project, so everybody be, have St. John utilities. Sidewalks will be required along Calumet Avenue, of course. We'll have some discussion about how wide that sidewalk needs to be, because the sidewalk to the north, where the bank is, and the sidewalk to the south for Greystone are only five feet wide. And I believe your ordinance calls for maybe an eight-foot sidewalk now on these wider right-aways. So, but that's kind of not a major topic. There'll be significant acceleration and deceleration lanes being installed as part of St. John Commons. And my recollection is, most of the work that's being done for that will kind of suffice for this project as well, because we're lining up the two entrances. So once again, we're just here to introduce the project. We'd like to, we haven't done any engineering yet, but we just want to make sure everybody's on board with it before we start getting into hard engineering.
What's the anticipation of who would build in there? What kind of?
I'll have to let these gentlemen answer that. You'll have to step up to the microphone if you can answer.
Do you have any clients that you're thinking about? State your name and...
Joe Napoli. We do have a couple interested parties. One is a retail storefront. The other is, we actually have two established restaurant owners that currently have establishments in Illinois that are looking to come over to Indiana.
So this development, is this part of Lot 1 also? Is it the same owners as Lot 1, the very, where the bank sits?
None. That's owned by the bank.
That's owned by the bank, okay.
Providence Bank platted all of it into a two-lot subdivision, but they only own the one lot.
The one lot, okay.
May I ask you, are you aware of that corridor that we're working on? There was a workshop here.
Yeah, we attended.
Did you?
Yeah.
So they have your input?
Do you have your?
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Do you have an input on that?
Yeah. I was pretty forthcoming, yes.
No, I'm just, because some people, you know, might tend to play games with it. And what they're doing is forthcoming with us, with the fellow building forward.
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, as a resident that lives five minutes away, you know, they were asking a lot of the things that, you know, we wanted to see, and why a business would want to come to this area. So I kind of shared what I thought the area needs, which a lot of, I mean, obviously, I think everybody in here is in favor of more restaurants, right? You know, quality restaurants, not a chain restaurant. So, yeah, I mean, I was very forthcoming during that. So, thought it was a good exercise that we all were able to do that, too.
Yeah, I mean, for me, eventually, you know, this road, Calumet Avenue, I would think eventually would need to be curb and gutter and decorative streetlights. And, you know, we have the bike path and push that along here, and landscaping and decorative plants and bushes and, you know, just make it a higher, higher-end scale to go along with that corridor, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, a lot of the stuff in that area, you know, is brick facades. I mean, obviously, our brick, our building at Hanover 2 is bricked all the way around. I think it does have a higher quality element to it. Very disappointed to see a Dollar General going, you know, down the street. So, long-term, I mean, very vested interest from myself personally, but Mike and I, you know, just looking, we see the vision of that corridor there and on board to make it as beautiful as we possibly can. So I feel the lot of calls about business owners looking for space in kind of that 1,200 to 1,500 square foot range. You know, some professionals, some unique businesses, but there's definitely a need for more space there. And obviously, that's coming with St. John Commons, but I think that, I think it's a good area for density as well. So I think, yeah, we're looking at a couple different buildings and whatnot that we can put on these lots. I think the, you can put a three-story building on the lot. So, I mean, we're evaluating some of that stuff. Kind of rambling on.
Okay, no, all good.
Doug, I am going to take a look at Black Opal Lane, that, where you had that cul-de-sac there.
Sure.
I know there, I want to say that water main could be looped right now, but I'm just going to verify that it is.
My understanding is the water main runs along the very north side of Greystone.
Right.
And they, Mr. Slager informed us that he thinks they put a T in heading north, right near where that sidewalk ends. So we will, and actually, we're connecting that as part of St. John Commons, because that was, we're connecting to the stub at the very north end, and at the south end, and coming across Calumet from St. John Commons. So all that's going to be connected here pretty soon, anyway. But my understanding is there's a stub ready to go for us. But please verify that.
Yeah, I will.
And Doug, we looked up the pipeline blast zone, and it looks like the ordinance says after June 24th, 2020, any lot created shall have at minimum, the minimum lot area for such applicable zoning located entirely outside of the pipeline impact area.
Yeah, so we know it's going to be a challenge to get those in there. It worked in St. John Commons because of the PUD, and we made it work. But here, those are not going to meet your requirements. So either it doesn't happen, and that's why we're not going to take it off the drawing. It won't be on the next revision. We'll have to revisit it later and decide how bad it's worth pursuing, because it's going to take variances. And we can't, we don't want to do a PUD for this project because we don't think it's necessary. And that's not a good enough reason to make it a PUD right there.
Any other questions?
If you don't hate it, we'll be back.
So far, we don't hate it.
Okay, good.
Next item, Item D, Continental, Unit 2, Lot 27-36, proposed preliminary replat of lots 27 through 36 of Continental, Unit 2, part of the original 55 acres of Continental, zoned RC1 PUD. Good evening.
Good evening. Jack Slager with Schilling Development. I'm here to talk about Continental tonight. And you'll recognize, what you see up there is the original lot layout and street layout for the overall Continental. Over the last three years, we've platted and developed Unit 1, which was the original Continental Way, lots 1 through 17. And then we later came back and platted Unit 2, which is the Summit Cove cul-de-sac that goes to the northeast. And so, in the meantime, we did have one customer that came in and purchased two lots and combined them right there. That was a one-lot subdivision of previously platted two lots. We are finding that there is a demand for larger lots, if you can believe it. These were all originally platted as R1 lots, 20,000 square feet or larger, 100, minimum 100 by 200. And we're seeing a demand for oversized lots. And so we're asking to come in and replat that north side of Summit Cove, taking it from what was seven lots down to five. The first, the first four lots are consisting of lot and a halves essentially, and then the last one is a double lot. We have one buyer already for a lot and a half. And rather than make them come in for another one-lot subdivision, and then the next one would have to come in for a one-lot subdivision, we said, we'll just do it for you. We're going to replat that whole side of the street, and we're going to create five new lots from the seven old lots. So the first four are considered a lot and a half, and then the last one is a double lot. And so we discussed it with the staff, and they felt that we should come in for a, essentially a replat. We'll call it, Doug, the third re-subdivision of Continental Unit 2.
No, thank you. That cleans it up a lot better than what it could be.
Yeah, otherwise, we'll be back here four, four or five different times. Once we start with a lot and a half, now you're left with a half a lot, so that has to go to the next one. And so it works out cleanly in that respect.
The, at Lot 24 and 25 on the right-of-way, looks right below the little arrow. Looks like there's a jog.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So the, part of the initial plan, the entrance right-of-ways are 60 feet with sidewalks on both sides. And then as they go into the cul-de-sacs, they drop down to 50 feet with no sidewalks. And that was done in an effort to conserve trees and try to narrow up the...
So that was originally like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the original plat. So we're not, obviously, we're not changing any engineering. We're not changing any of the road right-of-ways. We're literally just moving lot lines.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you remove the extra water service and stub the sanitary, or what's the plan there?
Well, I don't know exactly how we want to handle that. Until the house gets built, you know, obviously, some of these, so there'll be three extra water services and three extra sanitary services. Until the house gets built, I'd like to leave it up to them to decide which one works better for them. I don't know that it's necessary to remove it, but if it is, then I guess we'll just need to know that if, at some point.
Is the water main in the right-of-way, in the parkway?
Yeah, I'm talking about the one-inch services.
No, but I'm saying, close it at the corp. That's what I recommend.
Yeah, we would prefer to have them probably removed, Jack, just so no one comes in and plants a tree, and all of a sudden, they have a copper tree, so.
Yeah, right. That makes sense. We'll, we can put something in writing that says that we'll do it when, when that house gets built or whatever, we'll remove the extra ones. So that makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. Slager, you know, it's interesting that you said there's a demand for oversized lots when we hear other developers saying that they don't want a demand for oversized. They want smaller lots because people don't want to cut the grass. Can you, can you tell me where you got your info from, just the same way I asked that other developer?
No, I would agree. There's actually a demand for both. And we see the demand for cottage home lots, duplex lots. We still get the demand for that. Maintenance free, that's a different buyer than this buyer. So if you've followed Continental, you know that the lots are 250,000 and up. We have set a minimum value on the homes of 1.5 million and up. So the buyers that are looking at these lots, when they come in with a 4,000, 5,000, 6,000 square foot house, surprisingly, it doesn't fit on a 100 by 200-foot lot. So that's what's happening. Of course, now that they're a lot and a half, and they were 285,000 before, now they're 430,000, or whatever the math works out to for a lot and a half. But there are buyers out there that are willing to pay that for a larger lot. And because of the atmosphere of Continental, the gated entrance, we're hoping that this is the year that we see some construction in there. We have, like I said, we have contracts already on one of these lot and halves, and they're excited to get started this spring on a house.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Next item, Continental, Unit 3, proposed amendment, do we, that's kind of the same thing, isn't it, or no?
Well, no, it's different.
Proposed amendment to the preliminary plat of lots 18 to 26 of Continental, Unit 3, part of the single 55 acres.
So again, Jack Slager with Schilling Development. Similarly, we have an undeveloped cul-de-sac. That section that you see there that's denoted as Unit 3 has not been improved yet. No sewers, water, street in there yet. The primary plat that was approved three years ago called that out for nine R1 lots, 20,000 square feet. We would like to make it five. So this is just a little different than what we just talked about. The other is replating existing lots. This is making a modification to the primary plat approval, to change our primary plat approval from nine lots to five lots. These would all become actually one acre or better. So they're, they're all essentially double lots. No change to the engineering. We will have the ability this time to put one water tap and one sewer tap in for each lot. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward, just converting nine lots into five. Just converting nine lots into five.
Okay. Any questions?
Lastly, I would like, on both of these items, since the next meeting is three weeks away instead of two, we would like to ask permission to advertise for the public hearing at the April 5th, I believe it is, April 5th meeting?
6th, something like that.
We have enough time. We have the notices prepared, and we'll send them out tomorrow and put the notice in the paper. So we'd like to be able to conduct our public hearing at that next meeting. And at least on the replat section, we would like to get that platted right away. The other section, the Unit 2 replat, we would like to get that platted right away. The Unit 3, we'd like to get the approval for it, but we won't be putting the infrastructure in until the summer. And then we would be back probably in August for the final plat of Unit 3.
Yeah, can I just ask?
Sure.
I just want to clarify.
Sorry. Wanted to clarify. So none of the infrastructure is in Unit 3?
Correct.
That's okay.
Yeah, there's, it's all stubbed right to that property line. It's 400 feet of street, so it'll go in pretty quick. But we're planning to do it in June and July this year.
No services to remove of the...
Yeah, he indicated that.
Okay, sorry.
Jack, do you feel that with this replating, that you're going to have even greater interest in what you're planning?
I hope so. We, in each of these sections, we have one current potential customer that's waiting to see if we can get approval for this. So, and again, if we can get some construction going in there this summer, I think it will, will spark way more interest, yeah. So I, I don't know if we need actual permission to advertise, or if you're okay with it, we'll be here for the public hearing in April.
Sergio, what's your thoughts?
We can, we can prepare, or we can assist in getting this set for public hearing on April 5th.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next item, Item F, St. John Business Park. Proposed business park at 10675 Joliet Street, located approximately 510 feet west of Hart Street, Joliet intersection, on the south side of Joliet Street. Zoned industrial, 55 acres.
Good evening. Jack Slager again with Schilling Development. Wanted to introduce you to a new project that we've been working on, actually, for a couple of years. And again, we feel the time is right for this project to start moving forward. This is really just the first look for you guys, and something to think about and discuss. This parcel is just over 55 acres. It lies between the sets of railroad tracks on the south side of Joliet Street, between the current industrial park and the Hack Cemetery. There's approximately 100 feet of frontage on Joliet, and it blossoms out into a large parcel in between the tracks, going all the way back to the, the water on the south end there, the wetlands and lake back there. Of course, on the east side, across the tracks, you have the Three Springs duplexes. On the west side, across the tracks, you have Target, Stracks, Commercial Development. This property is and has been zoned industrial forever. We have had some inquiries over the years for industrial users here. Our vision is a little less industrial, and we'd like to call it a business park. We've put together a concept plan that has 18, I'm sorry, 22 lots that range anywhere from one acres to four acres. And those would have some flexibility. But we'd like to, we'd like to see a upscale business park that has masonry buildings or buildings with masonry accents, landscaping requirements, similar to our other developments. Something a little more upscale where we would have some professional office uses, could potentially have restaurants or breweries. This area does lie within your TIF 1, and it also does lie within your new riverfront liquor license district. So we would like to start marketing it. We're going to put some signage up on the property and see what kind of interest we get. And once we find a couple of users that want to go in there, this is what we're hoping to do there. So we're here tonight just to get some feedback, see what, what your thoughts are, what you'd like to see there. Couple of other things, we, we talk about, I'm sure one of the concerns is going to be traffic. Joliet Street now has nice access out to 41. With it not being industrial, we don't see heavy truck usage. It will be a business park, so there will be some trucks, but not, not to the level that industrial park would have. But the traffic does now have a route to get directly out to 41 without going down Joliet Street with the 96 Place bypass, if you want to call it that. The other thing to take note of is we have been working with Lake County Highway Department since last year, possibly the year before that. They're going to be replacing the bridge that exists right now just east of Industrial Drive. There's a pretty small two-lane bridge right there. Yeah, there you go. Sergio's going to pull it up.
With the culvert, that's going to be a culvert project, right?
It, it's actually a bridge.
They're, they're going to replace, replace it with a bridge?
Yep. So we have requested that that, Lake County Highway is actually spearheading that project, but we've asked that the town of St. John be involved. And we have requested that that be a three-lane bridge, rather than a two-lane bridge, to allow for future expansion of that road in addition to having the ability to have sidewalks on both sides of that bridge. So we actually just saw the plans, the preliminary plans this week, and they have done that. They, they are designing a three-lane wide bridge with oversized sidewalks on both sides. So that will go from about a 22-foot-wide bridge to a 51-foot-wide bridge.
It's desperately needed.
Which is fantastic, yeah. So that's good news. That's supposed to be coming later this year, potentially, or early next year. And so that helps with that whole corridor and, and traffic flow. Ultimately, you know, hopefully, there'll be some additional improvements to Joliet to where it can really tie in with the 96th Avenue bypass, I like to call it. So you can see what the, what the current industrial park looks like. It's a bunch of pole barns with a lot of asphalt and not much else. We really want to take this to another level and make it something really nice that the town could be proud of. The, the main entrance road that comes into this project off of Joliet Street was included in your thoroughfare plan a number of years ago as a potential connector or collector road that will eventually go all the way out to 231 on the south. So we are going to plan for that to happen. We will stub that road all the way to the south. And eventually, as that property to the south develops, that road would go, continue on and go all the way out to 231. That's actually drawn as an 80-foot right-of-way, so we have the ability to make that a little bit wider road, possibly have some decorative islands in there and make it look really good. Any questions or feedback?
Yeah, just, I'm sure you know, the tie-in to Joliet Street is very challenging.
Yep.
You're, you're westbound, you're going over the tracks, you got an entrance right-of-way into this development. Roads are narrow, you're turning, you got a bridge that's narrow. Yeah, you said it's going to be improved. And then, soon as you get past your entrance, creek or the ditch, and then another entrance. So it's, when I first saw this, I was like, yikes.
Yeah.
You know, minimum, I would think the road needs to be widened. Have you talked to the church, the church, the cemetery? Is that owned by the church?
The diocese owns the cemetery. We actually purchased a little bit of land off them to make sure that our entrance was wide enough. I think we'll be able to work with whatever, whatever we need, they'll work with us. There's some low ground in there up front.
Yeah, maybe some grading.
We can fill that. We can do some grading in there, improve the drainage.
Give them an access.
Give them an access off the side, you know.
Sidewalks.
You guys can mow it?
That's on you. So yeah, we'll, we'll work with the church. We, we have some ideas. There's room to, to improve that road properly, and it'll need turn lanes and whatnot, so.
How about the property to the west, the resident, the, the house there?
We've pursued that a number of times. They're still there. They're not ready to sell yet, so.
But maybe frontage, you know, wiring some of that.
We would allow access there. Someday, that'll be a lot or two. It's low, it's wet, it's floodplain and everything else, but.
I was just saying, I wonder if there's floodplain.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a bunch. So there's, you know, there's a bunch of engineering that's going to have to be done, but.
Sidewalk, I'd like to see sidewalk.
Yeah, I think we can figure out sidewalks.
We have sidewalk being proposed on the north side from Hart to the railroad tracks. You know, that'd be nice to have that on both sides.
It's going to start to come together, yeah.
Through this area here. And, you know, because it's, I cringe every time I see kids ride their bikes or walk into that area to go to DQ or wherever they're going.
And unfortunately, we only have about 100 feet of frontage there. So I mean, I don't have a problem putting sidewalks in for our 100 feet, but we can, we can make sure that it, it will be part of the bigger picture. With this being in your TIF, there might be an opportunity for the town to do something at some point to get that sidewalk, yeah, from their sidewalk at Three Springs. So you really just got to get it over to 96 Place, and it's not that far to go.
Jack, can you, can you talk about the NIPSCO parcel that's on the west side of the proposed?
So there's about a seven-acre parcel there that NIPSCO owns. It's landlocked. We've been talking to them for a number of years on it. We designed it into our parcel. It doesn't need, you know, it doesn't need to be, but we've been pursuing it. We told them we're interested in buying it if, if and when they're ready to sell. And so we've had a number of discussions with the real estate department. They really don't have a use for it. They used to pick up these pieces along the railroad tracks years ago, and they don't even know that they own it. So it's likely we'll, we'll come into possession of that at some point. But it doesn't need to be a part of the project. At least, the first phase of this would likely just be the entrance and maybe three or four lots. It'll, it'll end up going in phases.
And the lots need to have plenty of parking. On the north side, you go to the Malt Brothers, and there's an issue with parking. I mean, you got to park down the street, or you're not on, not on their property. You got to park on, and I know there's agreements, but.
Yeah, no, and the other...
It works, but it could be, it could have been better.
Yep. And, and obviously, we'll have to look at each use. And you guys will, I believe you'll have to approve every site plan for every lot as they come in. But we don't anticipate any on-street parking. We also don't anticipate any outside storage. You know, you've got like Corin Maine across the street. They've already inquired about property here. They, they need to expand, but they're outside pipe storage. That's, that's not what we're looking for here. So, yeah, I think we can make it something really nice.
Any questions? Okay.
Good. We'll be back. Thank you.
Next item on the list, G, Amendments to Subdivision Control Ordinance. Proposed amendments to the town's subdivision control ordinance. Sergio?
Can you guys settle down for the night? No, we've made some changes, some recent changes, some feedback that we received from different staff members and departments. And I just kind of want to go through what the highlighted portions are, just so that the commission's aware. We've met with some members probably a couple of months ago, several months ago, probably in the fall. And then we've worked with some different departments, wanted some changes to the subdivision control ordinance. And we've, over the last couple of years, we've seen how this has operated and how resourceful it has been. And we'd like to make some tweaks since it was updated about two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago. And so I just want to identify some of these changes and then continue working through this, refining this, fleshing this out. The idea is that possibly return back in April for the study session and kind of have another iteration or version of this until we feel comfortable that we're ready to set this for public hearing. So like I said, I'll just scroll through the highlighted portions and identify what the intent of the changes were. And so there was a request for, the first idea was that, that street signs really be installed as prior to building permits being issued, so that way contractors know where they're going, new residents know, don't know where they're going. And so we identified, what you see highlighted, underlined, is proposed language. In this case, we identified as part of issuance of building permits that street name signs, informational street signs, and stop signs be included prior to issuance of building permit. And then we also suggested as part of the combination of this, adding this language, this would be removed because the top language initially covers it. Again, you guys will have, you should have copies of this. You want to go back and review some of the highlighted portions. And then if we, as we continue going through this, you have questions or have any different ideas, then just go ahead and free for you to email us, and we'll go ahead and make those revisions. The next section really is wiping out the identification of inclusions, which is more of the definitions. And then we kind of use the same language, but added more. So we have more inclusions and meanings to include that. Again, just feel free to go through there. This is really the new term, some of the terminologies that we may have missed or added to the subdivision control ordinance and expanding on the language or clarifying some of that language. So there's no, no miscommunication in interpreting the, the code itself. Probably about a year ago, there was some discussion from this commission regarding a plat review committee, our new section amended rules and procedures. Again, this was just kind of a placeholder. Ideally, this is probably where it would go if the commission decides to move forward with a plat review committee. Attorney Decker was able to kind of research this on the state level, or state code requirements, and research with additional adjacent communities or local communities and state communities that have practiced some of these plat review committees and site, and technical review committees, or subcommittees that are permitted by state. Adam, I don't know if you want to elaborate. Hopefully, you guys got some of that information today. But there are four committee procedures that Adam was, I'm sorry, Attorney Decker was able to outline for us for review. Let me see if I can pull that up as well. Here we go. Nope, that was the wrong one, Adam. Sorry. Let me bring the other one back.
I can probably pull it up.
Yeah, I, I've got it here. I just.
Yeah, so what I sent was just really a summary that I put together, which identifies the different committees that a planned commission can appoint. And I think the one that's probably the most relevant, I think, for purposes of the discussion, at least in, you know, what I recall in past discussions, would be the plat review committee and how that could be implemented, so to speak. And that gets into the difference between what is considered a minor subdivision and a major subdivision. Currently, the town's subdivision control ordinance makes no distinction because in the past, and this is true for a lot of communities, they don't, they don't make that distinction. They simply say, "Any proposed..." they don't, they don't make that distinction. They simply say, any, uh, proposed subdivision is going to come before the full plan commission. There's going to be a hearing. And there's no distinction between major and minor subdivisions. But the Indiana code does allow a plan commission to, uh, essentially, uh, send what would be considered minor subdivisions, and there's a definition for that, uh, to a review committee to be reviewed. And the statute also provides that it does not require, uh, a public hearing for the approval of a minor subdivision. So I, I provided that information. I provided some examples, um, from other communities. Um, I think for purposes of that, um, plat review committee, um, the town of Sherrville has similar provisions. And so I simply provided that as just something for purposes of discussion, um, in consideration. But there's also other committees that, um, are identified in state statute, probably maybe not as pertinent to, um, that one particular committee.
May I chime in for a second?
Absolutely.
Um, I read through this, this afternoon and I think the, the first one he was discussing, I think, I still think personally that the plan commission should determine what a subdivision is and what subdivisions are going in, whether it's large, small, whatever it may be. I think more, more than anything, the town could use like a technical review committee and have the department heads or recommended people from the department sit down and review all of these plans. I think that's what this town needs. That's just my opinion.
So Attorney Decker has provided information on a technical review committee, um, and then outlined some previous, uh, some, another community's practice and procedures on that. Um, again, this is really for discussion. Um, we can hang on to this, you know, over the next, you know, four or five weeks to continue discussion as we meet again, um, at the next study session in April. Uh, to help digest some of this information, you know, again, we, we just were able to share this probably in the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Um, and knowing that we need some more time to review this, but at least you've got this information from Attorney Decker, uh, to help further discussion along that. So, with regards to the different committees. If there's no other questions or discussion, then we can move forward with the review, the additional reviews of the, of the subdivision control ordinance.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, so again, that's just a placeholder in the subdivision control ordinance. Then the next section deals with, uh, primary plat. Essentially, what we wanna do is codify the application fee. Um, and then also identify engineering review plat fees and then clarify some of the language with, with, with regards to plat parcel units and tracks, the way some of these, um, uh, references have been made. Um, and then we add the language that deals with applications that are submitted on behalf of the town. Um, believe it or not, in the last couple of years, we've probably had two or three applications on behalf of the town following our own practices and procedures and rules and regu, regulations as well. So that kinda codifies, or at least clarifies, uh, some fees collected. But, um, with our new engineering, um, team coming on board, uh, they've kind of advised maybe possibly incorporating additional fees or clarifying fees, so that way fees are collected in advance uh, prior to meetings and decisions being made. Uh, cause typically what we find is that, uh, some of these projects entail the, you know, reaching out to our engineers ahead of time before anything is filed, working with our legal team to make sure everything is in order. Um, and sometimes these, these, these projects don't manifest and the town is left holding these fees for, uh, legal fees and engineering fees. Um, but again, this is another community's process. We can, um, and they, what they've done is they identified some of these fees based on what they typically see for interaction with engineering and legal team, and their legal teams, um, identified the number of meetings that usually happen. So a lot of this would be put up, up front, uh, prior to, um, moving projects forward. It really kinda solidifies the intensity or the, the intent of these projects. But again, we can have more discussion on this and we can bring more information with regards to, um, how these are discerned with regards to fees and maybe even a local community that, um, makes their determinations on local fees as well. Cause that would be asked, I know, by the council, more than likely by the council on how these fees are, are determined. But this language here that you see highlighted, underlined essentially is putting those fees up front rather than at the back end. Cause I'm sure you all understand that there is a lot of, uh, behind the scenes work that goes on between engineers and the attorneys and, uh, in order to prepare, uh, uh, the information for this commission for review. The next section, uh, again, deals with, um, recently discussion on extensions of, uh, primary plat approvals or reviews from six month to twelve. Uh, yeah, so that language is included there. Uh, again, then the requirement for submission, uh, including one digital set and a PDF. Currently, it says three sets of engineering drawings marked for construction. Typically, we keep one set, the, um, and then the fire department keeps another. And I'm not sure where the third one goes, but, um, I think the building commissioner keeps, takes it home for fun, so. But really that, that section does identifies that. And we have been receiving a lot of this information in PDF, uh, but we just wanna kinda codify it. So if someone says absolutely not, you're never getting an electronic version of our plans, so. Again, then also working with our engineering team, uh, we identified how to, um, uh, bring in some of these digital copies and what format. We just kinda clarified, um, the most current AutoCAD format. So the engineers can update, uh, this information on our, on our town maps as well as we kind of build our GIS. A lot of this information can be easily transferred. And then again, as well as in a PDF. Currently, the, the, the language reads a file format compatible with versions used by the town. Um, and in this case, we, in knowing how the communities operate, most times it's auto, um, through an AutoCAD file. And so, and then with regards to identifying infrastructure in latitude and longitude accurate to the most, uh, within the three inches of hydrant. So that's kinda some of the language we are asking to kinda clean up there or at least incorporate for clarification. This is also some additional language that recently came in with regards to the subdivider developer extending all public utilities. Um, and it goes on to list the utilities on all public right of ways within the subdivision and public right of ways contiguous, contiguous to the subdivision. Again, this is, it's identified in separate sections, but this kind of identifies it at the beginning of the, within the general requirements. So that way the, uh, builders and developers, um, know what's expected from the front, from the get-go as we move forward with the rest of these subsections. There's also discussion adding a pre-requirements for a pre-construction meeting. Um, I've seen communities that do pre-construction meetings and they are the most effective way to kind of, um, create timelines and manage, um, how these, uh, projects are executed and, and maintained on, on a schedule. Um, and if we see things are falling behind, we can easily come back and, and ask for extensions or, or kind of updates of what the status is on these projects. It also helps when the public starts inquiring and says, I haven't seen any movement, what's going on? And with some of these pre-construction meetings, they always help clarify some of that information. Um, there was some discussion on sidewalks as well and comply with current ADA standards. Currently, the, the, the requirements cast, uh, require cast iron detectable, uh, warning mats. That's a little bit, I think, antiquated, even though it's more of a recent requirement. Um, most communities or current ADA standards don't require that. And so we're just, and they constantly change, uh, for, um, meeting ADA requirements. And so what we've kind of included is language that, um, current ADA standards required at the time the sidewalks are installed, so. Again, this kind of refer, references, um, utilities across the front of each lot. Occasionally what happens is we see that a parcel comes in and in order for them, and they wanted to build, let's say, a single family home. And in order for them to obtain a building permit, they have to have or have to be identified as a lot of record. Uh, cause we will not issue a building permit for new construction on a parcel, meets and bounds parcel. We need to identify it as a lot in record. And so they need to extend utilities and they just say, well, can I just tap from across the street? And ideally, if the utility extends across the entire width of their property, then absolutely. But to continue services, and if it doesn't, in order for it to continue services, um, we're requiring that they extend all utilities and services from one end of the lot to the, uh, second end of the lot. So that way as development continues, you can tap onto those additional services. Uh, public water supply, again, we talked about looping the water mains. Uh, most developers are great at, at, and, and understand the intent of that, uh, or the purpose of that. And so we just wanna kinda codify that as well as require twelve inch water mains along arterial and collector roads, uh, that are identified as, uh, function, uh, within a functional class, so. And then including frontage roads as well where they may be coming in for that. Again, it's just to provide better service and, and calculations on water demands as well. And then language that goes, you know, that reads to the entire front of the lot. These are, um, uh, this is regards to the fire hydrant. Uh, there are some recommendations to include shut-off valves, um, and/or, uh, interplace intermediate hydrants as hydrants placed as needed and required by the fire department. If we move forward with a subcommittee, and currently we, we meet with the fire department in our new developments. Uh, but this kinda gives them the authority to say, we really need hydrants here and here, um, as a recommendation to the plan commission. Uh, again, uh, working with Public Works, there were some concerns about replacement of decorative costs and streetlights. In this case, what we wanna do is explore about maybe, um, maintaining that sense of place for some of these developments that have specialty lights, um, kind of be, uh, placed back onto the HOAs that are in place. Uh, if there's specialized certain decorative street lights or street signs in that case, so. Including street signs, street information, um, you know, where Public Works has to go out and do that work. Trying to recapture some of those costs, um, that were not designed by the standards, uh, you know, town standards and then more specialized. Again, this is again from a request from Public Works and engineering has identified that three and a half inch is, um, a, a more suitable, um, aggregate based than the two inch that was previously installed. And it helps with maintenance and stability in the long term. Um, there was some discussion on especially with the new corridor studies coming in, identifying our collector roads. That if we start identifying some of these roads, um, our collector roads as, uh, uh, complete streets, we want the wider sidewalks, which would kind of bump up from seventy feet to eighty feet to get turn lanes as well as eight foot wide sidewalks, um, where needed. So that's, that's some discussion that occurred there with our engineers. Again, with regards to street names, the biggest one I think we may have is, um, Summerland Street and Mill Creek and then Summerland subdivision. Um, so no duplicate of, of street names with, with, with named after subdivisions outside the proposed subdivision. Just kinda clarifying that. Again, replacement of signs and lights, decorative lines, signs and lights should be at the cost of the POA or, um, HOA where exists, um, to help, um, control costs, uh, when incidents occur. This is the potable water distribution. Again, it's just really identifies, uh, eight inch diameter for our roadway, uh, functional class and twelve inch along, um, arterial and collector roads. Uh, just, you know, we've had some developments that come in and, uh, the town has had to up, up, um, the eight inch to twelve inch. Some developers agree that a twelve inch is better initially and agree to those terms. In this case, we're just kind of codifying those road classifications. Once they go into a neighborhood or local roads, um, it's understood that eight inch is functional. But in order to get, um, that level of service, uh, twelve inch along arterial and functional, or arterial and, and collector streets is really more important, so. And again, language that deals with it being looped, no dead ends. Uh, fire hydrants, uh, again, uh, the fire department has standards as well. And in this case, really, this is just identifying, uh, the gallons per minute, uh, on the fire hydrant, um, with regards to not the entire fire hydrant being identified, but just the, uh, the caps or the tops that, that, um, when there is a fire emergency, um, the, the department knows what gallons per minute are being issued for each fire hydrant. So we'll be consistent with that as well. All right. Um, again, this is some update, updates to the storm sewer information, uh, changing from five years to ten years. Um, and then, um, this is really some of the requirements that are, are changing with storm, storm sewer management. I'm not sure, you know, John, if you have any questions or anything you wanna add to some of these changes. But, you know, this is, this is pretty standard, I think, in the industry.
Yeah, a, a ten-year design for a storm sewer is pretty common. I have to admit, yours being five years, the first time I've ever seen that in over thirty years, so.
I'll go to the town and say, John.
Ten years is very common. Doug, Doug could vouch for that too, so. That's really what that, it's kinda cleaning that up.
Yep.
Just, and, and a credit to DVG, they've told me, well, we designed it for the ten year anyway. Thank you, Doug.
And this is something that came out of stormwater, it was just basically some, uh, clearing, cleaning up some of these numbers. You know, I don't know, John, do you wanna explain to them what these numbers represent or?
John?
Oh, pardon?
Sorry, sidebar.
I know, I know, I know. We're, we're gonna have to move Councilman Blazeac probably somewhere else.
I'm trying to work off of two different.
No, 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 we're gonna have to.
Okay, uh, this table, which is in, in this section, I had noticed that, uh, it said hundred-year uh, intensity rates and that was not what was in there. So I corrected the numbers. And I added a few more. I extended the table up to twelve hours. In some rare circumstances, the, the peak detention number could be at a later, um, duration, so. You can even go longer than that. I, I, in most cases, twelve will cover it, so. That's all that, that was, yeah. The way the table was, it, it contradicted what the ordinance was saying. So I'd use Bolton seventy-one. That's not what was in that table, so.
Okay.
I corrected it, yeah.
There was some, uh, recommendation, our discussion, our thoughts on can the town, um, elect to take a fee in lieu for, from subdividers, developers with regards to installing input, uh, public infrastructure. Um, you know, we didn't know if this would fall under some type of impact fee ordinance. Um, and whether, um, especially for, um, infrastructure that would be installed, installed in right of ways that currently don't or would never or may possibly not entertain, um, infrastructure or utilities. And so we kind of, um, you know, asked our attorney to, to look into this and, and he gave us some, some ideas and, and it may kind of take it, it's a whole different beast that probably would not be adopted into this at this point in time. Um, I don't know, Adam, if you wanna, uh, uh, you know, kind of advise on what your findings are on this?
Well, right, so, um, uh, any reference or consideration of an impact fee is a whole different animal. And so currently the town has an impact fee for, uh, parks. Uh, that was the original impact fee. Um, and it also recently adopted a road impact fee. And, and so currently, I, I don't, I considered it just basically today. I don't believe an impact fee would be appropriate for what is contemplated, I guess, per, for this point. Uh, in any event, it certainly wouldn't, uh, be a simple amendment to the subdivision control ordinance. If you recall, the, uh, town went through the process of considering and adopting the road impact fee. And, and that took probably twelve to fourteen months because of the requirements in state statute that require advisory committees being established and that that be reviewed and, and by engineers and studies. So that, that would take considerable time. And I'm not even sure that it would be applicable to infrastructure improvements. I'm not even quite sure what, what was specifically being considered in that. But, um, yeah, it would be a different animal entirely, as Sergio suggested.
Sorry, saving this big file. And I believe that was the last of it. Oh, wait, here's something here. There was some discussion on maintenance bonds, surety, surety maintenance, maintenance sureties, kind of up from two-year to three-year. There was even a suggestion to bring it up to five years. I've never seen one that's five years, but typically I've seen them at two years. But there's a suggestion to at least bump them up to three, and we can have some discussion on that as well. And then, oh, again, this probably, I think this is the last of it. Just some need, some needed discussion on identifying certificates of occupancy, final occupancy versus temporary occupancy, identify different, I've, I've included different sections in the municipal code as well as the zoning codes that reference authorization for the town or for the building commissioner to issue out occupancies. But seeing that there may be some, an opportunity to increase flexibility with issuing temporary occupancy, given the climate that we live in, with regards to literally the climate, whether it's cold, you know, winter and raining season, how some of these occupancies are difficult to obtain. And whether, how do we protect the interests of the town with additional escrows? Or do we move forward with temporary occupancies? And then also Public Works has a stake in this and interest as well with regards to identifying, you know, is something really, could be classified as a final occupancy? Or can we move forward with a temporary occupancy of inhabitant of a structure versus outside work that still needs to be completed? Again, it's just highlighted for discussion and we can have more internal discussion on, on kind of seeing, outlining what this looks like if any changes occur. But these are some of the other sections that would be impacted as well. It's kind of like when you work on an old house. You can't just move one thing without adjusting everything else that's connected to it. So, and for this case. Let's see, what else is this? Oh, penalties. Right now, the, the language is identified as not less than $100 and not more than $5,000. It's really an arbitrary, it's just a wide range. How do you choose? Is it based on the location of Jupiter? Is it a full moon? You know, how do we, how does someone make the assessment on what a fine should be? And so what we've done is kind of identified fines that are currently in place, established by the council and what authorizes the clerk treasurer to collect, which is $250 per day, which then excludes stormwater penalties, which is a whole different section as referenced in this subdivision control ordinance. But that really gives the, those issuing the citations, a concrete way of how to establish fines, which is $250 per day for violation, for violation within this subdivision control ordinance. That is it. Again, this is, I'm asking that this come back for additional studies, another study session. Any changes over the next three to four weeks, please send them to us. And then we'll make those edits and we have some more discussion on April, mid-April for the subdivision control ordinance. That is really all we've got for this item here.
All right. Any questions? Looked like you guys did a great job going through it, Sergio and staff. Looked like you went through it with a fine-tooth comb. So, yeah, I glanced through it tonight and...
If there's other sections or any other items or ideas that come up, I mean, you could always do a quick Word search on the documents themselves and, and kind of read those trigger words and then see, interpret how those are outlined within the subdivision control ordinance. And, and, you know, you know, we can follow through on those sections as well. So.
Any questions from anyone?
Will there be an opportunity for a public comment?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah, this will go to a public hearing and probably not into May or June. But well, like I said, I think in April, we just want to have another public study session, or another study session at a public meeting here. So, if you've got some ideas, shoot me an email.
I like that so far. And I think with what we're seeing with single lot, lot and a half, two lot, if, if you move forward with that plat review committee thing that would eliminate somebody having to do a one-lot subdivision, 22 lots or two-lot subdivision to split one lot, that would make things a lot simpler.
All right.
Okay. No more questions? Here are none?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second. Adjourned.
We're good at that part.
Yeah.